Um. What he carried forward was for years, he's carrying it forward into and then what he targeted is for the following. Which definitely makes sense to me.
I don't know.
That figured out.
Yeah.
But we are not.
Oh.
I love lots.
Me too. I always wanted to be in Hollywood.
Pretty soon it's gonna be somebody else's job. I'm gonna set it on the clock.
You you can be the new blogger.
Well, I'd shop the better than that.
And you can become a blogger. You know where the bodies are buried?
Yeah. How's it doing?
Pretty good. I went back yesterday and put me on a different antibiotic.
Good.
In fact.
Oh, with that.
Yeah.
Listening to them.
That was a big step.
Yeah.
I sure feel it.
It's no matter. It's no matter, actually. Just think we need to get over it either. He just healed it slower.
Oh, we thank.
Yes. I don't know you. You're a people. Which one?
Both.
I don't know.
A big.
They can't, oh, yeah. I'm just choosing.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try. I'll try. And I don't see.
So.
Enough. Everything cut.
Yeah. When I when I spend my way.
Yeah.
Now, when it goes from snaps, that's hurting or I don't have any, I really don't care. Yeah. It's just that yourself just needs to do stuff.
He does that.
I um. Just hanging. He said, but as well, but ready, just said.
Yeah. This is.
Yeah.
It is.
She also. I think I can talk about becoming that.
Usually this is the best. We're here on this. So. But Simon.
They can. So they can.
Sure.
Sure. The show is small. September and November on December. Fifty songs. In time. Since we were so rich.
Well, to some degree, that's okay, but it needs to be at a difficult page. It needs to say. Not to say.
So Stephanie told me that.
Yeah. So you're there. I'm good.
Why you said.
Anyway, it's our ass. Morning, Mr. Wright.
Morning, Cam. How you doing?
Good, buddy. How are you?
Wow, did you have your meeting?
Hey, with Michael.
With who?
Debbie.
We had the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I called you after that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had any additional. Just got back from Michigan last night.
Right.
We're gonna do scary up there. Lots of.
How's it going?
It's going good. We're turning into a lot of stuff. Winnie's been out those days up there for about a month doing work and we tripled the size of the snowmaking pond. We're adding a second one in a new location, but that doesn't have to happen this year.
Yeah.
Lots of new snowmaking, piping and electrical and gutted the rental shop and. But we're lots of uh. We're heavy tech. Like we have a lot of stuff that's heavy tech. But everything there is pretty old school. So it's a lot of changes off the hands for them, bringing everybody up to speed and. You know, a lot of that stuff is just hard to learn until you're in the moment, but you know what I mean? Like. You're not dealing with all the different technological issues. It's hard to. We'll tell them, well, this could happen or this could happen or this could happen.
Right.
So. Uh, but it's coming together.
Yeah.
Does, yeah.
I just told somebody else. I mean, we drove about two days ago, drive back yesterday, which wasn't, you know, super efficient, but ten hours in the car with B Chip and Jonathan, we get a lot of stuff hampered out of it.
Oh, yeah.
That's about what's a new thing. We pull lots of trailers back and forth. We don't go anywhere without a, you know, twenty-four foot trailer with a whole bunch of equipment behind us.
Oh, right.
Getting getting lots of experience between stuff that Winnie's bringing from Timberline and stuff that we're bringing, you know, new snow guns and all kinds of equipment.
Yeah. That was I said, John in North Indiana.
We don't use that at all. So we're straight north of Elgar, Indiana.
Oh.
So we go to four sixty-five and go thirty-one.
Oh.
And then on sixty-nine. Um. Yeah, it's only twenty minutes into Michigan and we're every five minutes from South Bend, yeah. That's that's the. South Bend and then Elgar, but South Bend is a bigger population draw, obviously. We'll be looking at it. It's the furthest south area in Michigan. So we're gonna try to get everybody before they go up that way.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. Really? You know. Small fellow, that's fairly recent. Hard to hear that.
Have a lot to work with. You're filming a lot of. But you're playing that spell.
Yeah, I went to.
And ours.
There was a little infection there. Yeah. You know, my dad's. On two or three times. Yours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not going. We're beyond that here. We are where we are.
I love that.
It's the. Look, I mean, I didn't.
I'm a. No, I'm telling you, stay in hell with.
Are you certain? Are you certain?
Everybody here is.
I know.
Cause we always approve like. So something. So I guess it was curious. Yeah, I think it's like the number is. When it's. Isaiah.
Or if they.
Why do we give?
I would have thought that when you hear those here. I just, I was just quite. That's just. You know, it was like.
What is that for? Is that left?
Matt. The whole amount. Council, okay, like Matt was just like a week, I mean. Logic was three million, we better. So the side.
Project P Men two point seven.
Your speed. Bomb. A panel. For. It's for.
That's.
More slang. Oh, more. Yeah. I think originally, I think originally.
I was crying.
Yeah, that's ready. Originally, it's made of. I think originally. And then sixteen new engineering, the rail was being. Change down.
What was like eight hundred thousand original what?
They go, I've got plenty of this. So.
They they just got. Not in the middle of the near. They don't have any hard to do.
It's part of.
Yeah.
I just want to give them two.
Right.
Big wealth. Looking good. Be on the miss.
Part of what I think.
I mean, you're looking as good as you ever been.
Like, have luck.
Try.
See how you do business in the world. Time to call the meeting to order. If everyone would like to join us and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would like to rise. Thank you.
My pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, where we stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our.
As a recipient of federal funds and support different counties' efforts to ensure non-discrimination, equal access to all citizens, the county gathers statistical data regarding participants and county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey, however, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and ADA. First order of business today is the adoption of the twenty twenty-six budget. Just need a motion to approve the budget.
Boom.
Second.
Marking Tim. Any discussion? All those. Who approves six hundred percent?
Aye.
Posnay. Motion passes. First up is the ready grant and Mr. Pearlburg and Mr. Hoffman.
Morning, John. Morning. Uh, so I wasn't advertised, but I'm Jim Deaton. I'm the president of the Redeemer Commission, along with Mike Pearlberg and Jordan Hoffman, who are allies of mine on the commission. Except for like, but he works with us every day. And I'm here this morning to ask you to approve. Uh. A uh, a grant request that I believe you've received a copy of.
Hmm.
Uh, and it's uh, to support the construction of the uh, new road, new county highway that we're we're going to be building going into uh, whitewater processing. And that's Moore Lane. And uh, this is going to help us financially do that. So if if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them or brought technical help and. And the the only question is, may we submit this grant request?
Okay. Uh. To me, it's pretty straightforward. Ready is apparently able to provide funding assistance on this project, which we approved the whitewater processing.
Correct.
Uh, project for Dearborn County in the West Harrison Tiff. So this would help us with the funding of that road.
Yes, that's correct.
What was the amount of the grant?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that, and then when when would you plan on construction starting on the road or?
Uh, as soon as we can.
Well, is it gonna be a formal bid process then or?
The bid process has not started. The technical processes are still undergoing.
Gotcha.
Mr. Deaton, on this form, it says there is a county match of four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Is that?
Redevelopment.
Only added. That's what I want to confirm.
That is, that is from us.
Great.
So you plan the cost around seven forty, seven fifty then?
That's correct. Uh, that and that includes the uh, reconstruction of the railroad crossing. Uh, we met with the railroad and we were pleasantly amazed that they didn't ask us to gold plate the rails. So it came out to be cheaper than we thought it would be.
The railroad to nowhere.
Yeah, but roll. It may be a railroad to nowhere, but when this happened, I was standing beside the retired president of that railroad line and asking him a lot of questions. He said, if we're up to him, he. It it potentially goes somewhere, so they would never give up the right railroad crossing.
Railroads are notoriously difficult to deal with.
Sorry.
They're usually pretty difficult to deal with.
They usually are, but it was amazing. Uh.
I mean, they're very protective of their territory.
Yes, but everything they asked for seemed to be very reasonable.
Okay. This is something that was done as part of the uh, whitewater mill, I mean whitewater processing uh, project. Is there a motion to?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand there's a discussion about re-expanding this Tiff to a twenty-five-year Tiff area.
There is. As a matter of fact, at our last meeting, uh, we passed a resolution to do that very thing on two parcels, including whitewater processing. And what I'd hoped to be able to tell you while I was here is that um, at our meeting, this coming Monday at five o'clock in open session, Baker Tilly is going to be there. And they're going to be talking to us about the economics of this re-tiff. And uh. It. There are two ways that you can hear what they have to say. We'll we'll be streaming live, and if you'd like to appear, you're welcome to come and ask questions of Baker Tilly at that time.
Is this, is that whitewater processing, is it in the uh, existing Tiff down there now?
It is. It's in the West Harrison Tiff.
And and when does that expire?
Yeah, that was the thirty-six, something like that.
Um, there's, so there's two parcels that are part of this proposed re-tiff. Uh, there's the northern parcel, the up near Harrison Brookville Road, and then there's the southern parcel, which is kind of the southern half of whitewater processing site down toward the Whitewater River. Um, the first parcel, the northern parcel was tipped in two thousand and six, and then the tip area was expanded to include the southern parcel in twenty fifteen. Um, and so.
But that southern parcel's all on the flood plain, right?
Mostly, yeah. Um. Whitewater processing is part of their project. They're, you know, filling, raising, rolling dirt from some from some sites, some portions of the site in that flood floodway. Um. Yeah, I've looked at some of the numbers, uh, received some a data set from the uh, Dearborn County Auditor's Office on what, you know, the. The Tiff and the revenue has looked like for the periods that both of these parcels have been in the Tiff. Uh. The, keep in mind with Tiff, there's the base assessed value. So because nothing's occurred on these two parcels. Over the time that they've each been tipped, uh, most of the base AV has been about eighty-three percent, looking at the the revenues and where those have gone over these past nineteen years, dating back to the initial Tiff. Uh, most of those revenues have gone to uh. The base, you know, the underlying taxing units, county general fund, schools, libraries, solid waste district. Um, about thirteen percent of that. Um, since a new parcel was created as part of a part of that property being. Um. Resurveyed um, into a new parcels. Um, some of that revenue on the both those parcels in recent history has been coming more toward the redevelopment commission. To the tune of about two thousand dollars a year, um, looking at the most recent tax year. Um. The, if the re-tiff, it's re-tiff, this new allocation area goes through, everything that's there today will go back into the base. We'll reset the base to. If the re-tiff is completed this year through January first, twenty twenty-five. And so all the revenue that's being collected, even the revenue of redevelopment is currently currently collecting on these two parcels, go back to all the underlying taxing units. That's a long answer, but.
Uh, it'll go back to the underlying, but if it's if it's tipped. Retipped, the date changes from twenty thirty-six to twenty fifty, right?
No, it'll be from twenty-five years of this re-tiff, starting in twenty twenty-five, so. Um.
Wouldn't that make twenty fifty?
Twenty fifty, yeah, but not starting in twenty, I'm sorry. Yeah. I thought you're not starting at twenty thirty-six, but you, yeah, so you're twenty twenty.
Well, yeah, twenty twenty-five to tw- twenty-five year re-tiff would be twenty fifty. So so the county wouldn't, the county general fund, I mean, that money would go to redevelopment, right? The the future taxes from the. From the.
From the new development, yes.
Yeah, and and the county general fund wouldn't get any money instead of starting in twenty twenty-six or twenty thirty-six, they wouldn't get it till twenty fifty then.
Yeah, the new uh, the new AV added on the parcels from this new development, and this is the case with all Tiff and uh, all the development that occurs with the Tiff district that's want to go to the redevelopment commission. Um, now, the county general fund is a uh, levy limited fund, and levy limited means regardless of how much assessed value falls within that taxing district. Um, the revenue's not going to change, just the tax rate is. So whether.
But they're still not going to get any money for an additional nineteen years.
Right, but your redevelopment commission will.
Right.
Redevelopment commission is part of Dearborn County, I like to think, is the redevelopment commission, sewer district, county council, the board commissioners, we're all on the same team. We're on team.
Right, right.
Right? We're trying to.
The problem is some of us have money and some of us don't.
At the point.
We're we're on the bold side of that here now, especially with Senate Bill One.
Yeah, and there is, there's two point eight billion dollars in assessed value across Dearborn County. We're talking about.
Billion.
Billion.
Yeah.
Two point eight billion dollars plus uh, assessed value across Dearborn County. We're talking about a re-tiff of two parcels where, yes, there is going to be a significant development occurring, that significant development is occurring because of investments that have been made by redevelopment and redevelopment is going to continue to make.
The original, I mean, I I kind of remember the numbers when we talked about this. The payback was going to be ten years from.
Right, twelve to thirteen, yeah.
Yeah. Further, and and now, have you guys rerun those numbers with this projections from Senate Bill One? Cause a lot of that money was supposed to be generated from personal property tax, right?
Yeah, so the the presentation that Baker Tilly will give on Monday at redevelopment's meeting, uh, there has been, this is a required part of the Tiff establishment process, a tax impact statement. Has to be produced, which shows what the impact is to uh, all the other taxing units, which I kind of listed before, most of them. Um, we have a draft of that. Uh, we're gonna have a conversation with Baker Tilly today to review the draft, but uh, we're hopeful for Monday's meeting, it'll be kind of a.
Yeah, let me get that forwarded to us one, just to see how it impacts the the county.
It's a draft form now, so I'll look to Mr. Deaton, but um, we will have that. It'll be public information, certainly, but following at the presentation.
You said that meeting's here at five on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
But uh, from the draft, I can tell you, uh, according to Baker Tilly, um, that the revenue impact for county general fund from this re-tiff uh, is zero dollars.
Say that one more time.
The tax impact revenue uh, as a result of this proposed re-tiff is zero dollars, according to Baker Tilly's tax impact statement analysis.
Mark's point, what he's saying is like, uh. Dearborn County would have, and the other underlying, would have started receiving, you know, if that Tiff went away earlier, then we would be receiving money earlier, but we're still talking in the distant future.
Well, to say. It would be added into the. The assessed value that the county as a whole collects its revenue from, based on whatever the tax rate is, because the county general fund, again, is.
We're limited by. Four percent.
But that, that's probably gonna change.
Whatever amount before part of that local government finance. The Dearborn County General Fund can collect. So.
We're trying to look towards the future and when when twenty twenty-seven and twenty-eight come around, we don't really know.
Yeah.
And and you guys don't know what, you know, what, we we just know that if this thing's retiffed, that we're not going to get any funds till twenty fifty from the from the county general portion. So we don't, we don't know how that's gonna change.
Baker Tilly tells us this is a zero dollar impact.
For now, but not possibly in two years.
That'd be a question for Baker Tilly.
I mean, I don't think they know either, cause they don't know what the state legislature's gonna do. They they've already indicated that that the whole. The uh, local income tax, property tax and everything's in the process of changing, so.
We understand that council and a lot of local governments are in a difficult position right now as a result of the impacts of SEA one that we know today and and are still wanting to be learning over the next handful of years. Like, we're sympathetic to that certainly. Um. But we're trying to do through this re-tiff is ensure that there is a sustainable, long-term source of revenue for your redevelopment commission, member of team Dearborn County, to be able to continue. Investing in infrastructure deficiencies and needs in key areas of the county, uh, where we feel that. Uh. Needing economic growth can occur, quality of life investments can take place. Um, you know, wanting a couple of examples, then we funded uh, redevelopment has twenty-five thousand dollars for the bright fire department for radios this year. With that Tiff revenue, uh, early just last month, there was a. It hasn't been finalized yet, kind of working through some of the verification on if it's a. Uh, a truck worth purchasing, but two hundred fifty thousand dollars paid for by the redevelopment commission using the Tiff funds. The help of bright fire department versus purchase fire truck, bright fire department being critical key infrastructure for the growing West Harrison Tiff and the industrial development there. Um. That was a request that didn't have to come to this, to your board, to the county council. Uh, we're also in early discussions with the water utility in West Harrison, Tri Township Water, about water infrastructure needs. Likely uh, multi-million dollars uh, for new treatment plant, groundwater tanks to serve the existing and potential future development at West Harrison. And there will be other, there's, there's some projects that we know today that redevelopment will have to take on, and they do have, because they've been good stewards of the money and they haven't spent a lot of it over these past. Nineteen years since the Tiff was initially established at West Harrison and other areas of the county. Uh, we know that um, what some infrastructure deficiencies are.
I know they're, they're gonna have a match on that ramp and stuff, which that that's needed to be done for years there, but that's dangerous as can be there.
And there. There there are likely other infrastructure deficiencies yet to be identified that are going to come about, just because they haven't been identified yet. They may be existing today. Uh, you guys may very well know what some infrastructure needs are out there in Dearborn County today and some of the areas of these Tiffs, and uh, we don't know what's going to come up. Uh, you know, in ten, fifteen years in the future, as new development occurs, what the infrastructure needs for those projects.
And when that thing was originally tipped, people were probably thinking thirty years was plenty long enough to have it built out, and now we're within ten years of that timeframe. I get that, but.
And some parcels will fall off, but uh, keep in mind, the the two parcels for whitewater uh, processing were taxified. Um, for a period of ten years on a graduated scale, so. Um.
Does that start at like ninety, eighty, seventy?
We think that will start this year with their investment beginning.
Yeah, ten percent.
Yeah, yeah.
The question I have is, you know, it seems like. We're giving up income, but we're gonna absorb more expenses. Uh, mainly since it's gonna be in the county road system, we're gonna have road maintenance. Uh, we're already contracted with Harrison on fire and EMS service for that area. And I don't, I I don't know what that additional expense could be. So that's my main concern is we're giving up. You know, basically nineteen years of potential income for. A whole bunch of unknown expenses.
Okay, that's something that will be discussed apparently on Monday evening, four is today.
But my question is too, can this be re-tiffed without council approval?
I can answer that. Yeah, the council, being as there's no debt taken on by redevelopment, correct me if I'm wrong, as your member.
Correct.
Appointed to redevelopment from this council. It was a courtesy of the new members to ask the council their feelings on this. And. The answer is no. Since there's no debt, the council does not have a vote on it, but out of three new members. Uh, Jordan and.
Trevor.
Trevor, myself. Felt like we needed the council. We wanted to hear their opinion on how they felt about things.
I agree with that. I think. I think council should have a. A say on it because we're looking at the certain income for potentially another twenty years and like what we've seen of Senate Bill One. You know, twenty years down the road, what's gonna, what's our situation gonna be? And here we've. Basically given up an opportunity for income.
But. The property tax is a a really challenging thing, and I I understand what you're saying. We have a certain set of cards that we've been dealt based on what we know currently is gonna happen in two thousand twenty-eight, and we have to make our decisions and assessments based on that. The challenging thing about property tax is so, yes, there's more dollars in value be coming into the overall pie, but is it the total net assessed value for the total of the county? But it's not additional found money because we are limited by the MLGQ of four percent, which means the budget and the money that we can have access to can only go up currently by four percent a year. And so what happens is when there's a larger piece of the pie, the tax rate that every entity and every person and every property pays can go down slightly. So I don't disagree that there's. Can go down slightly, so I don't disagree that there's some additional revenue, but what this does is it could potentially. When there's new money that comes in, what it does is it lowers everybody's rate by this much. Could be five dollars a household or parcel or ten dollars, I don't, I don't know, but like what Mike's saying is, we're trying to create. We're trying to take that, those dollars and create future expansion and growth and put some needed infrastructure and support our. All the parties that bring infrastructure, fire, water, sewer, all those things to make sure that we can grow and develop that area.
We're losing out on the four percent a year, but we're, we're gaining on local income tax because it's a job creation. And I, I think it's to the tune of, uh. I don't know, wasn't it like, uh, nine mi- million or something?
A new payroll?
Yeah.
I want to say seven.
And that's, that local income tax is all going to change here in two years too, we, we know that already, so.
Right.
And we're, we're working on it, we, everybody on this board knows we are, we're at a deficit this year. And what, what we have, instead of our, our revenue going up, we, it's already went down by like nine hundred thousand, so.
I think if, you know, as long as redevelopment and council commissioners or other county boards. We're continuing to look toward the Dearborn County Comprehensive Plan as kind of our guide for what the long-term investments for the county should be, like, we should all be. Kind of working together on the same page. Tax increment finance is one of the most effective tools that the state, which is. Through this legislation is negatively impacting what your revenue forecast can look like, but tip is still there, in my belief. Tax increment finance is the best tool that the state has afforded municipalities, city count, cities, towns, counties. To create extreme revenue for themselves, to be able to take on significant infrastructure projects to address needs. In their community without having to pass a tax increase or, uh, bring those things to, you know, to alleviate some of the weight on county general fund.
How, how bad did the, the personal property tax part of it hurt redevelopment? I mean, in the Senate Bill One.
Yeah, uh, the Senate Bill One eliminates the thirty percent depreciation floor on personal property, uh, and redevelopment. And in some cases like whitewater mill.
But that was huge on personal property.
When that goes down to zero, I mean. It's going to be a negative impact on the, on the personal property for redevelopment, just as a wood for underlying taxing units and anonymous scenario.
Let me make a comment, just to make sure everybody understands, Or Drive is a county maintained road existing. It's not a new road. What they are doing is reconstructing the first section of Or Drive between. Uh, Harrison Brookville Road and the Turkey Facility, uh, the facility. So it is not a new road being brought into our maintenance system. It's just an upgrade of the existing facilities the county maintains presently. And in the future, you know, if there's any other upgrades, resurface, repair, whatever, county will maintain what we can. But redevelopment always says the option to go ahead and spend their money in the future, twenty years from now or fifteen years from now, if there's deficiencies. In that pavement again, that the county can't fund to our regular highway maintenance. Redevelopment will be able to fund those kind of repairs in the Tiff district.
Thank you, Tom.
Uh, just one other, um. Thing I wanted to mention, uh, it's escaping me right now, but, um. Uh, oh, the redevelopment commission can always pass through the tip funds. Like, if they have so much revenue that they don't know what to do with, they don't have the projects. Clear up until twenty fifty, even though they're collecting that revenue. If they want to pass it through to county general fund, to the other taxing units, as a, if you appoint.
You got any spare money? Yeah. You opened the door for.
Can't you also, uh. If a, if a Tiff goes to twenty fifty, can't you also make it, you know, cease existing earlier?
Yeah, they can always dissolve it to, uh, prior, um, yeah, there's a process to do that as well.
Right.
We, we make a decision once a year whether to pass that money through or not. And when it becomes obvious that we should, that's the time every January.
Appreciate that. So we've actually gone way far off our, our agenda, if anyone's interested in the meeting on Monday night at five o'clock, then that would be the time to. Have any further discussion about the retipping or the, uh, two new parcels being included for the. Renewed tip for twenty-five years, but today we're actually here to discuss the ready grant that would help. With the funding of the improvements to War, War Drive.
I mean, we allow them to apply for the ready grant.
Thank you, Mark, is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Nay.
Let's do a roll call. Glenn.
No.
Dennis. Mark.
Yay.
Tim.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Enough of yes, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Dorden, for being here today, appreciate it, thanks for serving.
I would like to remind you, we will be live streamed on Monday.
Okay.
Uh, but if you'd like to ask questions, you're certainly welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. The next one on our agenda is Nicole Daly from Aurora in local.
So I'm going to.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I didn't know I was going to have to say anything. But, uh, so Nicole couldn't be here today, but she asked me to come because I, um. As MS four coordinator, Sandy Whitehead, um, will be a part of the interlocal agreement with Aurora. So they are, um, renewing their agreement with a three percent, three or four percent increase. Just because they have held it steady for three years and they, you know, made an agreement with Aurora to, um. Increase that, um, and add the MS four coordinator services to that. Um, we really don't know what my impact will be and, and how much I will have to review. Um, you know, Nicole's office, planning and zoning, um, does their permitting and enforcing. And, and they handle most of it, will they have, um, stormwater construction permits? Not really sure. So we're doing that as a, um, you know, not, not charging Aurora anything for my services as of now. And we'll just kind of assess it, um, eh, when it's time to renew. And see, you know, what I have done for them and, and if we need to assess any further money.
Have the commissioners adopted this?
Please.
Have the commissioners adopted this?
Hmm, that's a good question, I'm not sure.
The impression that they had.
County saying yes.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to approve this amendment to the local for MS four?
And it's also renewing planning and zoning's agreement with, with Aurora, correct?
Do you have a question, is that a thousand dollars bill on your salary?
No, no, that is, that is an increase for. Planning and zoning, just because they have held that rate steady for three years, whatever it was, thirty some thousand dollars. And they had agreed to do an increase, so it's been three years, so that's what that is, not, it is not for me. There's no money for me.
No, I'm just saying.
No, ma'am.
That makes more sense.
Yes, we don't have anything on our packet, but I think I remember some discussion at budget time about this or a previous meeting.
Okay.
So this is something I think that the planning commissioner had to approve, which I think Dennis Junior has indicated that that was something that was going to happen. I'm under the impression that the commissioners have approved this, so then it's up to council to also be a part of this process.
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve this interlocal agreement with, uh, amendment with Aurora?
So what do you see as far as additional duties for you and for planning and zoning?
Well, um, for me, if Aurora has anything that comes in. For development that is over an acre, they would be required to get a stormwater construction permit, which is where I would come in. The, the House and Senate did a lot of, made a lot of changes for people this past year, my job included. So, um, before, we were looking at things that were less than an acre. Um, now we can't be any more stringent than the state, so we have to follow the construction stormwater general permit, which is anything over an acre. So I don't know how much additional it's going to be for me.
So the new development down on fifty-six. By Loffrey Creek.
Yeah.
Would fall in.
Yes, if, if that is over an acre. Yeah, so yes, that would be something that I would, I would monitor, um, they would have to get a permit through me. Um, soil and water would also be involved, and then I do post-construction stuff, monitoring, so. Again, you know, just with the changes from, um, the House and Senate this year with House Bill ten thirty-seven. We're still trying to assess how that actually affects, um, MS four and what we can do, what we can, um. What we can manage or require people to do.
Sandy, is that a one-year contract that?
Yes.
With Aurora?
Yeah.
In their local?
Yes.
So council member Dole and I, after the budget wound up and spoke to the surveyor, because we had the same concerns, are we taking on additional responsibility and additional risk with very limited. Associated income and he felt like because it applied to parcels over one acre, there was very few projects that it would require Sandy's attention.
Yeah.
And he felt comfortable with it.
Yeah, he indicated that the planning of zoning was on board with it, Danny did, so.
Yes.
So if, if you're okay with it, the surveyor, who's the president of planning and zoning, is okay with it, I've.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion to, to approve this interlocal amendment.
Yeah, and then we'll reassess it after a year, that's our, that's our plan.
Right, thank you, is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second to Tim's motion?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Pose nay. Motion passes, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartman?
Can I get you to sign this real quick?
Yes.
Good morning.
Not good.
That's not a day.
What's an Asian York?
Guess another does that.
Thought you were the mayor.
I don't even call mayor.
Lost, you're doing here. Ah, I see.
In redevelopment, you're welcome to stay, or if you're needing to go on to something else, feel free to leave. Your pleasure. I think, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we did a budget adoption that included some ways, thank you. Good seeing you.
Yeah, third order, but yeah, I mean, it was like a lot of it.
Did you get everyone's signature, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're here. We discussed this, I think at budget time about the, uh, firearm system being replaced. I guess the, the measures declared emergency on it. And prices, well, Siemens, I had tried to contact Johnson Controls, they set up a time, they, they didn't, no show. And I called them back again, so we'll get, see you next week, but then I never seen them, anybody else, so. And I got Siemens scheduled to come in, they should be next week, get started on this.
Is it just this building, Eric? Remind me, I'm sorry.
The courthouse and all the jail.
So it's a whole campus?
No, it's just, it's a courthouse.
Courthouse.
Old courthouse, because this has got Johnson Controls in this part of the building, and it's Siemens over in the old ham.
And this is all just one-time expense, not ongoing service or monitoring or anything, just.
No, that's just, just for equipment change.
Who has who's your square? I mean, is that also, no, yes.
I usually just have Siemens do the yearly tests on that.
Okay.
So that's a different company again, but it's not too much to it, but.
Okay.
More like a re- residential area.
Okay, this was advertised at a team cap development for a hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred and six dollars, is there a motion to approve?
What's that, what's the fund balance there, plenty, plenty of money, right? Dennis, was that you?
Yes, yes, Dennis, not your motion. There's a second. Your motion is second, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Eric. Mr. Listerman?
Todd, Listerman County Engineer, what I'm asking for today is a transfer in funds. As you know, through our budget hearings, at the time, we were unsure exactly how Hindott was going to handle. The, uh, new community crossing. Uh, changes that came through the state legislature this past spring. Uh, following week after budgets, uh, I finally got our answer, and the answer is. We will be a twenty percent match. But the maximum amount allowable per community because of the decrease in the amount of funds that's going to go to community crossings. Has been decreased from one point five million back to a million. Okay, so basically that means I can apply, I need a match, for million-dollar match. Our twenty percent would be two hundred fifty thousand, so we can let a contract worth one, one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. With that being said, I only need two hundred fifty thousand for this year's application that will happen in October. Present funding in that budget, because we assume when we set like this year's budget a year ago. Uh, that we were going to still be on the one point five match at a fifty fifty. So what I'm asking is take that money that's already allocated and transfer it. Part of it, still keep the two hundred fifty thousand I need for my match, but the rest of it, take it from community crossings. And put it back into Batuminus, our share will not change because it's the same amount of money that would have gone with the match. To keep us at that level of paving, so we're paving approximately three million dollars worth of, of contracts a year. To keep our cycle around.
This gets moved to Batuminus, two questions I have is, do you even have the ability to let these projects this year, and if not, does this roll back to county general?
If it's, the, the idea is I'm going to have this contract left before the end of the year, yes, if it did not, it would roll back to county general. Okay, so that's what would happen if, like the community crossings, I would only need two hundred fifty thousand, if not, that just rolls to county general, but that, what that means is. Instead of letting three million dollars worth of paving next year, I would revert back to one point two million or one million, two hundred fifty thousand. That puts me back into a hundred and twenty-year cycle.
Right.
Which we've discussed at the previous budget, we don't want to do if at all possible, we want to try to maintain. That three million dollars pavement program.
So right now you have, uh, one point six four million in that.
Right.
Community, how, how did it, how did that, where did that money come from, or how did that get to be so high?
Because you gave me one point five million for my match, okay, well, when I go for match money. I have to estimate a contract of three million dollars. You know anything else, you try to as an estimator, you know, is my bids going to come in a little bit above? Or my bids come, come a little bit below, this year bids came in a little bit above or below, okay? So we can, our match wasn't needed at one point five million, this is a little bit of carryover.
The sixty-some thousand.
The little bit of carryover that's, actually, I think it's a little bit more than that, but yeah, there's a little bit of carryover. Because it, this year's bids.
Hundred forty.
Contract for community crossings came a little, like two point nine something, I can't, two point eight something. It's a little bit below than what I had estimated, but I try to keep it tight. Because if I screw up on the other end, and that we're four hundred thousand dollars over, I get to come up with four hundred thousand dollars. Or I lose all the money, so I keep, I try to keep my bids fairly, you know.
So you, but you have projects lined up, this money could be spent, I mean, one of the asphalt plants closed November, late October. So you, but you have projects lined up, this money could be spent on, I mean, one of the asphalt plants closed November, late October, so.
I let.
Let, it doesn't have to be paved.
I let, we're not built, you can see, all this, that's why I try to explain it to budget, is I'm letting stuff this year. To build next year, so the money you gave me in this year's budget adopted, the one point one million.
Yep.
Okay, is not gonna be spent in twenty twenty-six.
I got you.
It'll be spent twenty twenty-seven, it's it's that.
I was thinking if it was moved into Batuminus, needed to be spent on Batuminus this year, but you're saying you can let the project.
Two minutes right now, I think Batuminus shows. Oh, if you look at Batuminus right now, it shows a million dollars, okay? I have one contract that's already been let, that they haven't started work yet, hadn't paid out of it.
Yep.
Okay, that he's supposed to be starting next week. Okay, if it's gonna spend six hundred and some thousand of it on a contract that hasn't started, that'll be done before, within the month.
Basically, you wanna encumber this one point three million this year for next year's work.
I need to transfer it so then I can encumber it by by actually bidding the work. I can't bid work. Because I don't actually have the funds in the right account that I needed.
And if you don't, and if we don't do this, then the money would revert back to.
Back to general fund, which, which you can do, but then I do, my amount of work next year goes less than half of what I normally would do. In paving, and I'm to say bad our roads need to be paved.
So it would be, wouldn't it be, we gave you one point one million and the match is twenty percent, that would.
Because last year, when we set the budget, we were thinking we could match up to one point five million, you know, we're now, we're only get. So next year I'll come back in like May and ask you to transfer a hundred fifty thousand. Back to Batuminus again, but I'll do that next year on next year's budget. But yeah, because we were thinking our match is gonna be, we could get up to a million five. But then I'd say, no, that's now wrong, we're now going back, reverting back to the original million that we used to do a few years back. Because there's just no, the maximum award's now gonna be back to a million, so I don't need as much. Because we're thinking my match was gonna, or the maximum was gonna be one point five, I need the four hundred, I don't need the four hundred anymore.
We went two million the wrong way this year. I mean, we, we, we had to borrow two million.
Oh, we always have, we've done that forever.
But I mean, we were. So what would this swing?
What do you mean? On average year, we probably put about two point three or so million of riverboat into County General for our budget. So this year we probably dug a little bit bigger hole. Which is not, I mean, is, is sustainable because we do have a decent balance, but that's kind of a new development. I understand the irrational, is there a motion to approve this transfer from. Uh, Community Crossing's grant to grant match to Batuminus? Ever motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. I would like to say that the one thing about Community Crossing that they did stress this past session, because they put less money in that pot. It's gonna be more competitive. So, and we've been very fortunate over the years to always get like the max. There's, there's, our odds are less favorable.
Correct, and it's just, it's gonna get, it's gonna make it a lot harder on our end, we just gotta make sure our application, the roads we pick. That's why, but we always try to make sure we pick our through collector roads in our applications, it's like you.
Is that, is that just roads or?
I can be, I can do bridges too. The problem with the system is, is your. I have to have all my paperwork turned in for not the last application, but the application before. There's a time period, you can't have outstanding projects with Community Crossing not finished, okay? Batuminus work can be finished in a year, sort of like ARPA money, when you needed to spend it, you make sure you spend it, so you pick projects that are. You know what I'm saying? The problem when you get to bridges.
Engineering.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's extended out. I do all our contracts for Batuminus, I don't, I don't, we talked about this before, I can do that quickly. I can turn it around quickly, if you say, can I have a bid?
I just didn't know if the state looked more favorably on.
Well, Craig went from wrong, Todd, but didn't, four or five years ago, didn't you submit multiple applications, so that if they liked the paving through roads better? Or if they liked a bridge project, didn't you, I thought you had submitted both and whichever.
I had at one time, we had, we did a double application for some, from bridge funding. But then it got into that time period thing that we're looking at, it's, and it doesn't make it. I have a program, I have so much bridge work, so much pavement work, you know what I'm saying? So it's easier for us to fund locally the bridge program ourselves. Without going to Community Cross and use, and, because the amount of work doesn't change, so it's easier for me to run the Community Crossings through paving.
Gotcha.
Than bridges.
It just seems like the state's, uh, the, the last couple of years and then the future plan, that they're spending more money on bridges than they are on.
We've always spent more money on bridges, the, the emphasis is bridges and.
The prices have went up, so they're making sure the bridges get done.
The bridge program itself is, and we've been good at it.
I'm not talking about the county, I'm talking about.
No, but the state itself, what I'm saying is, what they look at, is they look at your program. I submit to the state every year, just like you do a PAM, Pavement Asset Management Plan. I have to do, I do a bridge asset management plan as well, we're not required to, but I do. Okay, that I send to LTAP to see where our system is, and they notice very much. At the state level, our. How I wanna say it, our participation, that we are funding bridges, we're taking, so we're constantly working on our program. We're not sitting back in the community saying, the only time I'm gonna do a bridge replacement is when I get federal funds or I get local help, you know, state help. Okay, we're, we're attacking our system, and that speaks highly of us, and when I go to ask for federal funds, they see that. So they're, they're saying, okay, Todd, you, you, you have funded other projects, yeah, we'll, we'll help you here, and I, and I don't go to them for every little project. When I go for federal funds, it's a big project, it's because it's really, you know, above and beyond my normal, what we fund locally. And that is seen at the state very well, or very much.
Yeah, I think you have to have an asset management plan, even.
That's our PAM, and to, we're required to PAM, but I do, and if you do bridges, you need to, I do both, even though I don't ask for bridge money. I submit both every year to LTAP, so they can see our progress on our system, so they know we are attacking. And we're not sitting back and just, just doing nothing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, love you know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Next is, uh, just a recap on what we had done during budget on the part-time wage scale, making the, uh. The, the change was that the sheriff's part-time could go up to twenty at sheriff's discretion. Do we need a motion for that, Connie?
Wait a second, I didn't think that's, I thought we had moved the sheriff to the level three to give them that.
Dane had indicated that he would like to have the discretion on. Not being like a flat, everyone gets that certain amount.
Right.
It was the nineteen to twenty-three dollar range.
Whatever range, whatever range you want.
Not up to twenty.
We, yeah, we, we moved, we, we moved that role into a specialized skill because.
We talked about these guys carrying guns out here and everything.
And so we had said they.
So just move the sheriff down to level three with, up to his discretion.
I'll make a motion to approve the part-time wage scale, uh, with the adjustment of moving the sheriff's. Front desk help to that level three special skills.
I got a question real quick, Liz. On the highway part-time, are those guys CDL certified, you know?
I don't think so.
They just like laborers or?
Depends what the position is. Okay, so some are, some are CEO, some are just summer. Tim's not here to speak to it.
But they don't have.
Todd Listerman County Engineer, it all depends who the person is. Okay, is that part-time, can be part-time in. The, what I, in Kune Bridge, I have part-time people. Tim has part-time on his staff, so if it's the mowers, they don't have to be CDL certified to mow, okay? If you were gonna use him as a snowplow driver in the winter, then that person would be snow, then he would have to have a CDL. I use it for my part-time sign people, okay? The, the people to put our signs up and take care of the.
Covers both.
It, it, it's just, there's not a, it's not a definite yea or nay, it all depends on what the position doing and.
A lot of times it's summer help.
Most of it, most of it is, a lot of it's some mowers. In my case, it's my sign guys, do the sign, part-time sign and inventory for me.
And I hate to tie Tim's hands, if it's the middle of winter and a big snowstorm and he can get some part-time.
Yeah, but we already did, we did give him a raise from where they were at previously.
Right, but I mean, just the, the part-time CDL guys. You know.
That, that's something you need to answer. Yeah, what's that? Tim contracts some out, I mean, you know, I just, I don't know what his staffing is right now, I know he's down people.
Right.
That's, that's, that's a question for Tim that I can't answer, what he needs on his, on CDL drivers, he need.
But he's aware that we're giving him a raise, uh, from where they were at previously. I mean, each one of these went up a little bit, right? They didn't?
This is the same level as the previous year.
Nineteen to twenty-three went up.
That's all, that's just a range.
No, we just moved the share from level two to a level three.
I thought that was, I thought that range started at like eighteen to, to something before.
Year before last, I mean, last year we did bump it by like a dollar per class.
I mean, Tim didn't request for those guys to be moved.
Yeah.
See, but I'm wanting, you know, if you were throwing nineteen or twenty dollars now. An hour out there to the CEO guy in the wintertime, say somebody that haul gravel for Uber trucking.
Yep.
In the wintertime, they're slow, they can't get on the roads because they're closed. Could we possibly get some of those guys to drive the county trucks?
But he's not having a problem getting roads clear, right? I mean, he's, he's subbing the stuff out.
It's a hustle.
Yes, it's.
My direction.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, it's, it's really when it, when.
Is that because trucks are sitting or because just the amount of roads we have?
It's the simplest, in order to be done today, which I'd like for us to be done today, on level three, add. Highway slash CDL in that third, but only CDL.
There's a lot of difference in the skill between running the weed eater and driving.
Exactly, but just so we can get done here today, we can just.
So do I need to amend my motion or resend my motion?
You can amend it to add in part-time level three, that highway with, with CDL would fall into that class. Is that?
That's my amended motion, thank you.
Okay.
That'd be very good.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yes. With that move. Uh, is there enough money to allow that? And then if we did run out of money, does that mean we don't?
There would be enough funds to take care of.
Okay.
So, any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay, motion passes. So Connie, I know there's a grant from probation, are you handling that? There's a grant from probation in the packet, that's, Commissioner. Okay, so, and it looks like orders up, you're next. Oh, is that what this two-year probation is? Okay, it's from the bridge event? So there's no county match? So all you're requesting is permission for this grant to go forward? I'm glad you did. So this is a community bridge, which is a fundraiser that they raised money for JCAP. And this is to allow twenty thousand dollars of that money to be used for these purposes.
Make a motion to allow the JCAP program to pursue these grant funds with no county match?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I had a chance to review minutes and, and I didn't see any discrepancies in there.
That your motion to.
My motion unless Connie feels like she needs to come to the podium.
Is there a second?
I will.
Motion a second, any other discussions? All those in favor of approving the minutes, I'd be saying.
Aye.
Motion passes. Actually, I didn't hear, I'm sorry, let's do a, a roll call on the menace. Ma, uh, Glenn? Dennis? Mark?
Yay.
Yay.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Is the next thing on our agenda, German or Jeff, or something else?
Everybody see that? The letters from thank you notes.
I've got that in my packet. Somebody get a couple thank you notes, one from Hill Forest for our contribution toward their efforts, and then also send this with.
That was a pass down thing, sorry.
So is there a motion to term?
Mark, I'll second.
Something we can all agree on.
That's the one you say yay to.
Yay.
We are, thank you everyone.
Every road is looking in priority with the amount, so they can come in and say, okay, we're only gonna fill in the first three roads, the first two roads. So instead of getting a million.